Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Glasgow City Council. At this time, please stand, and we will have our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, just as for all.
Councilman Terry Benel will lead us in prayer tonight.
Let's join together in prayer. God, our Father, we come before you this afternoon, thanking you for this day, for your care for us and various activities, and, God, we're grateful as a city tonight to come, to talk about the business of the city, to reflect on all the work that's done by the employees of this city and the citizens that come together to do good works. Father, we pray, God, tonight in our discussions, that we can lead this city forward. We're thankful, Father, for the heritage that you've given to us, and as we look forward to the many opportunities that you'll present to us, Father, help us to lead with your wisdom and your strength, and through Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Terry. Proceed. I'll ask Clerk Mona Simmons to call the roll.
Benel.
Present.
Goss.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Yes, ma'am.
Neal. Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Witcher.
All right, 100% attendance. Thank you all for being here and being so punctual as we take on the city's business here tonight. Our first item is to approve the agenda. You would have gotten that on Thursday afternoon in your packet. I will entertain a motion that we proceed tonight based on the way that agenda was written on Thursday. Okay, a motion by Councilman Kirkpatrick. Is someone want to make a second?
Second, Benel.
Okay, second, Benel. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of proceeding with the agenda as presented, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Now, and also in your packet, back on Thursday, you had the minutes from our July the 10th meeting. I hope you had a chance to look over those, and if you did and feel so inclined, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from the July the 10th meeting.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Councilman Neal. Any discussion on those minutes from July the 10th? If not, all in favor of approving them, indicate by saying aye. And opposed, like sign? Okay, so we've got the minutes approved, and we're ready to move into the activities of tonight's council meeting, and we're going to start off celebrating tonight because Judy Crabtree, who is the chairperson of the Quasque Bicentennial Committee, is going to report on, they've been really ramping up the activities, and she's given us an up-to-minute report of what all's going to happen. Judy, if you'll come up to the podium and tell us about that, okay?
Because I'm getting old, I have to have an assistant.
Gotcha.
This is Cynthia Watson, and she is the vice chair of our committee, okay? And we're glad to be here. The main reason we're here tonight is to say thank you so much for sponsoring a big event during the celebration on Saturday morning, the Pancake Breakfast on the Square. We need a few little details. We're getting ready to advertise everything, and we just need some details on that. And then we brought you the schedule of events, so you can see where we are as of today, and it changes, you know, from time to time. It's getting huge. It's getting, like, majorly big, which is what we wanted. And the support coming from all these people that's just taking an event and doing it is kind of unbelievable. It's incredible. This town is pulling together for this, and it's a historic event. Not going to do it again, you know? It's just this, this one time. It's six weeks away. Cynthia, you want to say anything?
No, I'd just like to commend everybody for their support, and, I mean, it takes a lot of people to pull this together, and we've got positive feedback, and we appreciate you guys, and that's the thing about it, is getting our government people behind us, and we appreciate that. So, you know, we've got opening ceremonies coming up on Thursday, and then something each day, and, you know, to end on Sunday with a day of celebration of our Lord, and, you know, how much better does it get than that? You know, that's what our country was founded on, and we get everybody to pull together, and, you know, I'll let you tell them about the big event that will close out on Sunday afternoon, and how that kind of came about.
Okay. We had not worked on Sunday afternoon until just lately, because we had to get all of these other things in line. So now we're working on it, and wow, Jeff Sneed and his singers, the Sneed family, will kick it off at 1:00. In the meantime, we're going to have tables set up for the various high schools in the county, like Park City High School, High School High School, all of those old high schools, so that they can have a little reunion, and we're going to recognize them. Also, we're planning to have a veterans' event to recognize all the veterans of Barron County, and a ceremony by the Freedom Warriors, and then Jeff Sneed got William Golden and the Goldens. William Golden, of course, was with the Oak Ridge Boys, and they're coming. They're charging a fair price, because they're going to come at 10. I mean, maybe not them, but their, their sound people are coming, so we can use sound all day long for that event. The time capsule will be a capsule that will be sealed at the end of the ceremony, and hopefully will be displayed somewhere in a public building that everybody can see. Not sure where yet, because we do not have all details worked out yet. We've got six weeks. We're working on it hard. The schedule of events, we plan to have it finalized by August 7th, which is one month out, and then we're not going to change it. We're going to try not to change it. Anybody have any questions for us?
I know you guys are very enthusiastic about this, and I think it's wonderful. I just want to thank you both for dedicating your time for this, being the backbone to this, and I think Sunday on September 10th, when it's all said and done, you'll walk out with a smile on your face, and we'll patch on back. Thank you all.
Any other questions for either of these two ladies? Judy's been bringing me for a couple of months now this piece of paper, but it's absolutely grown, like a flower garden, with more and more and more events on it, and I really feel like this is going to be something you don't want to miss, because you're not going to know what you're going to miss. You've just got to get there, for sure.
Judy, you might want to add Wednesdays at Colton's.
Oh, no, we can't do that. Really?
If you need help, yes.
Oh, talking about the meeting, she thought you'd want us to do Wednesday, September 6th.
No, 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 I'm talking about...
She's going to be at our meeting.
Yes.
Everybody in this room is welcome to our meetings on every Wednesday. I thought you wanted to add another day to the whole event.
No, if you needed more help.
Yes, we do. Our workers are very small in number. The interested people that we send emails to are, like, up to 120, and they do help in other ways. They take an event, and they sponsor it. They give us ideas, so they're there, you know? We haven't had hardly any negativity. Everybody's excited about it, and do you know where the Pancake Breakfast is going to be?
Well, we, we've had that discussion today. It could be somewhere between out front here, down to the end of the street.
Okay.
That's...
And you'll get us the details?
Yes, we will. We're working, we're, 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 right now are in search of the right type of grill to cook pancakes on.
What Ms. Kirkpatrick was, is we meet each Wednesday now until the time of the event at Colton's at 12:00. So if there's anybody, that's what she was talking about, if there's anybody that would like to come and, you know, sit in and see what's going on, you know, we love your input. So Wednesdays, 12:00 at Colton's.
Every Wednesday. And we need you. We need lots and lots of people to help. Even if it's, you might think it's something small, we haven't, we don't even have anybody yet to contact all these high schools. We're just trying to get that done. The things that are left are things that could be left until now, because we went from the logo contest to getting the banners. The banners should be in, hopefully, by the end of the month, we'll see. And so that's it. We thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Yeah, we're looking forward to it. We're going to have lots of, lots of competition amongst city employees to...
You want to do that?
To be out, to be over there and making the prettiest pancakes, stuff like that.
We could do a banner for the city employees. We'd try it to the city council, like, throw the, and you, a dunk the booze, or whatever.
All right. Very good. Thank you all. Appreciate that very much. It's going to be exciting, and I'm going to say it every so often, quasque bicentennial. Takes a little practice. Thank you all very much. Okay, so we've got that taken care of. Next on our agenda is a municipal order for us to appoint. I'm going to let Rich read the order first, and I'll do some introduction, okay?
On order of the mayor, Jim McGowan is hereby appointed to the City of Glasgow non-elected city officer position of Superintendent of Public Works. This municipal order is adopted pursuant to law in that it was approved by the council today's date, with an effective date of July 31, 2023.
Okay, you've heard the municipal order. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the hiring of Mr. McGowan as the DPW Superintendent.
Motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Now, let me introduce you to a fine gentleman. His name is Jim McGowan. He's right there seated. He's going to come up here and be sworn in just in a minute, and we're so excited to have him as the new superintendent of the Department of Public Works. Jim has his civil engineering degree from the University of Kentucky. He has worked for 19 years for American Engineers here in Glasgow. He knows a whole lot about various projects we've had. He's seen the big problems, the small problems, and we're just so tickled to have him come onboard here for the City of Glasgow. He is a native of Nancy, Kentucky. How many people in here have been to Nancy, Kentucky? All right, there's a lot of people have been to Nancy, Kentucky. It's a nice little town. He, his wife Kathy and he have two young sons, Parker and Clay. Is that right, Clay? Okay, Parker and Clay, and they're both football players, and they're both fine young men, and we're just tickled to death to have Jim McGowan onboard as our superintendent of Department of Public Works, and we got, I've just got to tell you, April Russell back here, who's been the antrum, she's excited to death, and she's flanked with people like Wesley Billingsley from the Department of Public Works, and Colton Montgomery from the Department of Public Works. We're all interested in seeing you getting started off on the right foot. We're swearing him in tonight. His official first day is going to be July the 31st. All right, Jim, if you'll meet me up here in front of the sign here. Toward the end of the evening. Okay, yeah, go ahead with this right here. All right, next thing we need to do is that we've got some old business to take care of here. This is the old business about some appointments to some boards that we need to move forward with. Rich, you want to take care of that?
On order of the mayor, Sam Chambers is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Municipal Airport. This appointment is for a four-year term, expiring July 31, 2027. Adopted pursuant to law, approved by the council today's date.
All right, well, you heard the order to appoint Sam Chambers, or reappoint Sam Chambers to the airport board, entertain a motion.
Motion, Benel. Second, Norris.
Okay, you've heard a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this appointment? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Sam is back on there, or continues on there. Same with Ms. Denise Dickinson. Rich?
On order of the mayor, Denise Dickinson is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Municipal Airport Board. This appointment is a three-year term, expiring July 31, 2026, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
Is there a motion that we adopt this order for making Ms. Dickinson continuing as a member of the airport board?
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, okay, second by Happy Neal? All right. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have another airport board appointment?
On order of the mayor, Terry Fisher is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Municipal Airport Board. This appointment is a two-year term, expiring July 31, 2025, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to let Mr. Terry Fisher continue to be on the airport board. By Councilman Neal, is there a second? Second by Mr. Witcher. Okay, any discussion about Mr. Fisher and the airport board? I'll call for the question. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We've got some unfinished business in an appointment to the Barron County Economic Authority. Rich, you want to talk about that?
Yes, sir. On order of the mayor, David Daudrell is hereby appointed nunc pro tunc to the Glasgow, or to the Barron County Economic Authority Board, Board of Directors. This is a four-year term appointment, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
All right, and I'll say for the, the nunc pro tunc is some of this old Latin stuff, and what it means is, is that the person that he's replacing, term ended before we got a new replacement for the person whose term ended, so we're just doing this kind of retroactively, so I'll consider a motion to approve David Daudrell. Okay, from Mayor, Mr. Marion, is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
Who is he?
David Daudrell? Okay, David Daudrell is a young man. He's probably in his late 30s. He is Mike and Ann Hyde's son-in-law. He met their daughter at Baylor College down in Texas. He is from Texas. He moved here 15 years ago, and now he is the chief financial officer for Houston's Industries. So that's about all I can tell you about him, and he's a really nice fellow. He really is. He's got four young kids, and he keeps them busy. All right? So we have a motion and a second. Did we vote? Okay, well, and all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign? Okay, the motion carries, and we've got David on there. We have about three more here. Rich, you want to go ahead and talk about the Stormwater Advisory Committee?
Yes, sir. On order of the mayor, Greg Scott is hereby reappointed to the Board of Building and Housing Appeals and the Stormwater Advisory Committee. This appointment is a four-year term, expiring July 31, 2027, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
All right, you've heard the municipal order. I'll entertain a motion that we approve it.
Motion, Benel.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion on this appointment? All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple of reappointments to the Code Enforcement Board to consider.
On order of the mayor, Bill Anderson is hereby reappointed to the Code Enforcement Board. This appointment is a three-year term, expiring July 31, 2026, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the order to have Bill Anderson continue.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay. Norris.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have for the, also on the Code Enforcement Board, one more municipal order.
Excuse me, on order of the mayor, Joan Norris is hereby reappointed to the Code Enforcement Board. This appointment is a three-year term, expiring July 31, 2026, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
You've heard the order. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, by Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Benel.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. These are, these are excellent, excellent people who do a really good job on all of these boards, and I'm so glad that they agreed to continue to serve, because it's a lot of important work that goes on. We have some new business to talk about right here, Rich.
This is a resolution authorizing and directing April Russell, the Director of the Office of Grant Oversight, to apply for a grant from the Kentucky Department of Agriculture Animal Control Advisory Board. Be hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. April Russell, Director of the Office of Grant Oversight, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make an application on the city's behalf with the Kentucky Department of Agriculture Animal Control Advisory Board for a grant in the amount of $1,500 to fund the Barron River Animal Welfare Association. This is a matching grant, and if received, the city match will be $1,500. Be it further resolved by the city that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary to carry out the grant application.
All right, you have heard the resolution about applying for this grant. I'll entertain a motion that we move forward with it.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
All right, is there a second? Second by Councilman Neal. Is there any discussion on this grant that we're applying for?
Explanation?
Uh, let's see. April, you want to explain the grant in more detail than I can, I'm sure?
Sure. It's, it's a grant that supports the spay and neuter program. It basically, the cats and dogs that come in, animals that come in down there, all spay or neutered before they are released or adopted, and so this grant just provides that service, pays for it.
All right. Any other questions? The, I don't know what the numbers are, but they're higher than you would think, as far as the number of spay and neuter procedures that happen down there, for sure.
Yes, they're, they're, they take in quite a few animals a year.
Yes, for sure.
So if we don't get this grant, then what do we do about where we at on that?
The, the money just comes from their funds. This is just a way to help them out with their funding, and the only way, the only way this grant can be applied for is if the city or county apply for it. The brawl cannot.
So the people that adopt, they don't pay?
Correct. This, this pays for that to happen.
It's, it's a nice service, for sure.
And it's an in-house process, and this is only for cats. We don't do dogs. We send, we send those out.
Yes, it is.
And just a little bit of information, I think as of a couple of days ago, the shelter's already taken in over 1,700 animals this year.
It's unreal.
Sometimes they do a voucher program for the dogs to make it less expensive, but if you just have a stray dog, or you just have a dog you want to take care of, but the dogs coming from there are all, no, no animal is adopted without being spayed.
And you can stop by the shelter. They're open every day except Wednesdays and Sundays, and they have a low-cost spay and neuter voucher program that they do there, so...
It is a dedicated group of individuals who volunteer and who work down there, for sure. It's an amazing operation. All right, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving this, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Next item, mayor, is a resolution authorizing the city to dispose of surplus equipment with regard to the Parks and Rec Department. Be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows, that the Glasgow Parks and Rec Department has old playground equipment from Beaver Creek Park. The equipment has been replaced with new equipment and currently has value. Pursuant to law, the items listed above will be sold by the electronic auction following publication, including the URL for the auction site, and shall be disposed of pursuant to law. Secondly, this with regard to the Glasgow Police Department, they have a 2007 Chevy Silverado truck, a Glock Generation Ford Duty holsters, and pursuant to law, these items listed above shall be sold by electronic auction following publication, again, including the URL site for the auction, and disposed of pursuant to law. Be it further resolved by the city that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary to complete the disposal of these items.
All right, you've heard, there's a couple of resolutions right there that Rich has introduced into the meeting. I'll entertain a motion. Do we need to vote on these separately, or you want to go and do them together?
This one is one.
This is one. This is one. We have another one for another Glasgow Police Department resolution.
Okay, all right, I thought we were putting them together. All right, this one, the one we talked about, the Parks and Rec, and then the vehicle from the police department, is the resolution that we're considering, so I'll entertain a motion that we pass this resolution.
Motion, Benel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, any discussion, any further discussion about this, about what we're actually surplusing here?
Yes, mayor, this 28 Glock Generation 4, is that include the pistol plus the holsters, or are we just doing holsters there?
The holsters right now, and then this next resolution, we've got some 28 Glock pistols, or I'm not a gun guy, but I'll describe it here in just a minute.
Does that sound reasonable, Chief Howie? That explanation?
I'm sorry, sir.
Does that explanation sound reasonable?
It does.
Okay, all right. Good questions. Any further questions about this? All right, all in favor of approving this resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution carries. Now...
Now, this one, mayor, is a resolution authorizing the city to dispose of surplus equipment pursuant to law, be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, that the Glasgow Police Department has 28 Glock Generation 4 Model 1 9mm handguns. The Glasgow Police Department has upgraded to Generation 5 with sights. That's the justification for the disposal of the 28 existing handguns. Pursuant to care is 65.041 disposition of the firearms or ammunition owned by a unit of local government. Sell to the employee to whom the firearm was issued, the firearm was issued to the employee as his or her service weapon. Be it further resolved by the City of Glasgow that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the disposal of these items pursuant to law.
Okay, all right, you've heard the resolution, some more surplus property to offer for sale. Any, probably want to make a motion that we approve this resolution?
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, very good. Any discussion about this particular resolution? All right, if there's none, I'll indicate, or I will ask for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution carries. Okay, a couple of things I want to talk about right here. First of all, Eddie with the Recreation Department, he just, he gets two victories in one little bumble in the middle of the road where they lost a motor at the pool, and so the pool was closed today, and, but Eddie somehow was able to find a motor, and he and his crew are going to put it in tomorrow, so on Wednesday, it appears that the pool most likely will be back up, except for something.
I'm saying fingers crossed.
Oh, okay, okay, fingers crossed. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to put a postscript in there.
Fingers crossed.
So I, you know, he's got a really good crew there with the Rec Department, they can take out the motor, and we might be surplus in that next month, when you find out if there's anything that can be salvaged out of that. So anyway, congratulations on that. I know you've been having movies at the park, it's been a good attendance on that. I do want to make sure that everybody realizes that Chief Howie and our police department had a huge turnout at the ribbon cutting for our substation, and it's gotten rave reviews, and I'm sure that just based on the number of residents over there that came up to thank you all, it's a win-win-win, so to speak. So I want to thank you for that. Somebody texted me about something, okay. And April, will you get up and talk about entertaining Glasgow Friday night? Because I don't have any information up here, but as a city, we need to invite people to be there.
Sure. First, we'll talk about, there's a Jeep, we're going to block off some of the road Thursday night. They're going to have sidewalk sales around downtown, and the Jeeps are invited to come out for that night, so that'll be an exciting evening.
Sure.
Then Thursday night at Beaver Creek Park, we will open the door. Well, the food will be ready at 5:00. We don't necessarily open the doors, because it's at a public park. The food trucks will be ready to serve at 5:00 o'clock Friday night. And the music starts at 7:00. We're having Philip Bowen music. He's a fiddler. He's been on America's Got Talent this summer, so I'm really interested to see him, and then J.D. Shelburne will play after that, and he is also a Kentucky boy. I believe he is from Taylorsville, so we're pretty excited about that, so come on out and enjoy that. Of course, it's all free.
I don't think you say that emphatically enough, and the admission price is...
Free.
You can't beat that, can you?
You can. It's a good time.
Yeah, that's right.
Nice to be in the park.
April's got a good committee together. They really work hard, and James is on that committee, and several others here are on that committee, making sure it makes for a really good evening. We get to shell off some of our, some of our wares here on Friday night.
Yes.
All right, am I forgetting anything else, Mona?
I got something in my mind, but I wasn't sure he wanted something.
Okay.
About the walking trail.
Oh, the walking trail. Let's talk about the walking trail. We, April immediately did a 360 there. The walking trail is closed right now, because it's dangerous to be on it.
It is.
But I will say, you want to talk about this, we've had two meetings already with all types of state people, and the contractors, and the engineers from American Engineers, talking about how we're going to deal with that walking trail problem out there. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure, it's a complicated and complex situation. The walking trail was built with a federal grant. It had not been turned over to us as a city yet. The state hadn't signed off on it, and then it was damaged. So there's a lot of questions about who pays for it, where we'll get the money, whose insurance it goes on. So all of those things are being discussed at every level. Again, we've gotten the state involved, the contractors involved, our consultant involved. It's just not as simple as going out there and cleaning it up and fixing it. So hopefully, we'll have a resolution to that soon, and we'll get that back on track.
Yeah, I'm sure, I think part of the discussion is that we want to build it back the same way that it just failed.
Yeah, we were looking at better ways to build it back if that need be, and if we can get more federal funds to do that with.
Sure.
And that way, we can finish this section of the trail, so that we hopefully can go on to the next section of the trail. So we're always looking to move forward.
I think you're right. It is very complex as far as how we got to where we are, and how we got to get going to get it straightened out. But that's, I'm glad you brought that up, Mona, because it's very visible out there, and the closer we get to school starting again, the more and more people are going to see what's going on out there with the, with the walking trail, and we will, when there is some resolution, we certainly will be sharing that.
Absolutely, and everybody, the state, the contractor, our consultant, the city, we're all anxious to get it back. It's just a process that we have to go through.
Everybody's very engaged, you know? Everybody's really anxious to come up with a solution and make it happen.
Absolutely.
Just an unfortunate thing that did happen. Okay, thank you very much, April. And I have nothing else to report, other than on Monday, August 14th, is when our next city council meeting is going to be. I think that I've got everything covered. Marla, you look like you want to tell me something. Did you want to tell me something? You look like I was about to forget something. I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't want to, I think I have everything down, but it's, this is one busy place. There's a lot going on, there's a lot to keep up with, and no one or two people can keep up with it, so I just want to let you all know that.
Your health holding out so far?
My health is holding right on there. It's, you know, it's just, there's a lot to, a lot to take care of up here, for sure, but there's a whole lot of good people that are working together to make it happen. With nothing else to be said, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn for this particular meeting.
Motion.
Okay, that was, sounded like Max Marion and Monica Prachik.
I'll take the second to it.
Okay, all right, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here.